Dean, I shall call this meeting to order. Please stand in the hunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we shall have roll call, please. Patty.
Council members Crails.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gullikson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes.
Okay, we will start our meeting once again with Mayor Waller's bi-weekly quote. I share these quotes with the council just for you that are in attendance, not to bore you with idle thought, but rather to just give life to the words of the living and the dead, if that makes any sense. Today's quote actually comes from Vince Lombardi. Many of you know him, probably some would argue he was probably one of the greatest football coaches in NFL history. He has a message for us tonight, and it goes like this. Individual commitment to a group effort, that is what makes a team work, a company work, and a society work, and a civilization work. Those are the words from Mr. Vince, spoken wisely. Okay, we shall move on to approval of our agenda for tonight's meeting. I would like the council to note that we're gonna have to add an item E, which is the first reading of ordinance number 122, and ordinance amending Morris City Code, Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages licensing and regulation regarding hours.
But that's on there. We're gonna add in.
You're adding in the one.
The 118.
The 118 is, oh, I'm sorry.
It's ordinance 118.
Oh, right here, I'm sorry, yes. We have to add ordinance, yeah, okay, that was. Ordinance number 118, that's the one we're gonna have to add under line item E, and ordinance vacating certain public right-of-way and setting the second reading for April 9th, 2024. There we go. Okay. That being said, are there any other items that any members of the council or corrections that they see to the agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the tonight's agenda.
I'm of approval of the agenda with the addition.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And once again, greetings to everyone. We do have a couple of guests in the audience. We have the citizens' comments portion of our meeting. If you would like to approach the council, now would be the time for that, or if you're just here to observe, that's fine too, but I wanted to let you know that if you want to propose to council, now would be the time. If you don't, we shall move on. Okay, good. We have no public hearings tonight. We shall move on to reading and approval of meeting minutes, and we'll go back to the February 27th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
I will move approval of the February 27 regular council minutes. I'll second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the 227, 2024 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have the condensed version of the same meeting minutes for the paper.
I will move approval of the condensed version of the meeting from February 27.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the February 27 condensed version of the meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We shall move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, the gambling reports, the December 13 Morris Public Library Board minutes, the January 17 2024 Tree Board minutes, and the 2023 Annual Report from the Tree Board. That's their annual report, I guess. And then item F is the transit report. I guess I can move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any, would there be any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda?
I guess we got an explanation on the HRA rental in here from, that we had questioned on last week. So is there anything you wanna elaborate with that, Rebecca, or?
I don't think so. The biggest thing probably to note is that they went in-house. We are looking at different fees in order to compensate and make sure that we are back in the black. So by the end of, by the end of summer, we'll be back in there. But the biggest thing to note is that they got new software, a new in-house person that that will eventually even out, but.
Good, yeah, it should pay for itself on what we charge for fees to cover the cost and just trying to make sure that we get that done. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like that'll take, probably take place over the next two, three years. It's gonna take a while to get everything into the system and so forth.
Well, yeah, and that's why it's a little more for the next few years, but we are looking, like I said, at different fees. They'll be bringing some options for fees, which will then cover our losses for the next, last year and then probably this year.
And I just had one question on line 55. That's our monthly charge for the law enforcement. I see it was $88,723 this month. Normally, it's been falling kind of around that 84-ish thousand, and I was just wondering what, is it just something to do with the billing cycle, or I know it was just slightly higher, and I guess maybe Whitney, I don't know.
Yeah, quarterly we get the assessor charges, so that's what made it bigger this month. So we got first quarter assessing. So it says there in the memo, the law enforcement is the $75,000, and then attorney charges, and then also the assessor.
Okay.
So we just go like quarterly attorney is monthly with the law enforcement.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Any other discussion on any of the other items on the consent agenda?
I'd just like to add on the HRA deal there, is there, is there anything that when we, when we have things set up with a different entity that they're going to charge us more, wouldn't they give us a little prior notice to charging more so that we can correct it on our side? It's like else and we're just getting, oh, oh, well, we just did all these things, so we're just gonna raise the price. Well, what if we just said we didn't want to use your service anymore? It's just to me, it catches me off guard. It's like, oh, well, here you go, you just have to take it.
Not, not that it's an excuse, but they had some staff changes too. I think, you know, learning curves and different things. I agree, we ask the same questions on, you know, as we go through this, you know, maybe next time we should have known a little bit sooner.
I would say that even with staff changes, it's customary. Everybody pretty much knows if you're gonna charge them more, you should probably let them know before you go ahead and do it.
Yeah, we discussed that in the meeting and we voiced our concern of them just basically sending the invoice without even an explanation or anything else. The council was not happy with that either, so they are in order of that. And hopefully that change, we just like, we need open communication and with new staff and retirements and turnovers. I think that'll be good.
I think overall, we've been very happy with the HRA inspection program. I think it's worked out pretty well for us over the years.
Well, I think so too, but I think if, you know, they pretty much know that we're piggybacking their services along with what we're charging, so an increase would have made sense to let us know in advance, so I I just think that that's something that we need to be on them about too, and if there's anything else that we're doing that with, that those entities know not to do that.
And the way, the reason why we're looking at probably a loss again this year is because our rental fees are collected and sent out in October, so for this year. So that's why we're, we're a little lag behind, and that's why when we have them come and discuss a fee proposal, it'll catch us up. What they're gonna propose will catch us up for the last few years.
Okay. Good discussion. Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second already to approve those items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We shall move on to petitions, requests, and communications. First up is we need to accept a donation from the Ambits for an ADA swing. Another nice gesture.
I will move approval of accepting a donation from the Ambits and the amount of $500 to going towards the ADA swing.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept that donation from the Ambits for the ADA swing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have an application for exempt permit for the Morris Fire Relief Auxiliary.
I'll move approval of the application for the exempt permit for the Morris Fire Relief Auxiliary.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the application for exempt permit for the Morris Fire Relief Auxiliary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is a motion to approve a request for marketing assistance with click content. I don't know, Becca, did you wanna speak to that at all, or?
Sure can. So the Tourism Board, they looked at two different advertising, two different events. One is a West Central Research and Outreach Center for their Horticulture Night, and then for Prairie Harvest Fest. So they are recommending that they go a tier-one advertising package for both of them, which and there you see that that includes all forms of advertising, TV prints, radio, social media blogs, and digital. Up to $6,500 for each of those events.
That tier system seems to make sense, the way they laid that out. Pretty straightforward, or no? Is it working, not working?
They just kind of put it in place, I think, yeah.
I guess it's where it is now. No, the thought, I think the ideas we're gonna be discussing at future meetings, what, what we're getting, what we're paying for, and I mean, we're paying for what we're getting, so I mean, we're getting that. It's just, are we reaching a market?
It's always a challenge. It really is kind of ongoing to see how that, because it's kind of intangible. You can't really put your hands on it, you know? All right. Did we have a motion on this? Well, no, we did not have a motion on that yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the marketing assistance with click content as listed.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we have a motion before us to approve a membership in the Minnesota Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau. Becca may wanna touch on that.
Yeah, so at the Explore Minnesota Tourism Conference, sat by a lot of people who really said that a good group to be involved in is this Minnesota Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus. The reason is, they give you a lot of information. They answer your questions about what the lodging tax can be used for. They're the ones that you go to when there's a lot of gray area. Looks like they have monthly educational opportunities. So it's $410 for us to join a year. Brought it forward with the Tourism Board, and they approved moving forward with it, so.
$410, I think, well spent.
Absolutely.
Sounds like a good resource tool for us on what we can spend our dollars on and some different places for us to go to ask questions if we're unsure, so, yeah, I think we've sat here and looked at a pile of money that's been collected and spending it properly without getting in trouble with our statewide fathers, and, yeah, I think it makes sense.
Well, I will move on that motion to approve a membership in the Minnesota Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve a membership in the Minnesota Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the added amendment for ordinance number 118. That's an ordinance vacating certain public right-of-way and setting the second reading for April 9th, 2024. I don't know, Becca, if you wanted to just maybe clarify the reason for that.
So when we went to go and record this, our description wasn't accurate. So on the one that you got, we will be adding a beginning paragraph that says that part of First Street, according to the recorded plat of first addition to Morris Stevens County, Minnesota, described as follows. And then it says beginning at, so that whole second paragraph is added and changed, modified from the original ordinance that you guys passed back in April or May of last year.
Sounds like, looks like just some housekeeping on getting it done properly, and we've already dealt with pretty much doing all of this, so I will move on an ordinance number 118, vacating certain right-of-way of public, and as worded, presented before us tonight.
No second.
All right, we have a motion, accepting ordinance number 118, vacating certain public right-of-way, and setting the second reading for April 9th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we can move on to ordinances and resolutions. First resolution before us is a resolution authorizing an application to the Minnesota Green Corps program. I don't know, Becca, you wanna maybe shed a little light on that one too, or?
Yeah, so we've been having a Green Corps member the last few years. Griffin is asking that we look at hosting for next year. What they would be doing is community readiness and outreach. I'm in the Sustainability 2.0 document that he will be presenting in a few meetings. One of the big things was community outreach, so this person would help with that community outreach. And then, as I stated in here, the only cost to us would be about $300. If they do any trainings or anything, that used to be picked up by that MPCA. He said it changed last year. They're still picking up for the Green Corps member we have this year, but that, that is something that we will have to put in.
Yeah, I think that's a worthy, worthy cause, you know. The more word, the better we can communicate with the public, I think, the better. $300 seems like a reasonable amount, or something like that.
Our contribution would be a supervisor in space to work. Who would the supervisor be?
That's Griffin.
Will be Griffin, okay. And office space in.
We do have office space at City Hall. Our current Green Corps member is out at the U with Griffin. Griffin's out, has an office out there.
Any more discussion on that resolution? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
We need a motion and a second.
Well, we do need a motion first, yes, you're right. Sorry about that, I got out of my skis.
I will move a motion authorizing an application to the Minnesota Green Corps program.
I'll second.
There we go. Now we got a motion and a second. Now we can have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Council member Crails.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gullikson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes.
Not to crash a parade, but I believe our ordinance on the vacating the street also needed a voice vote instead of a, that was an ordinance, correct?
You know, I can, I think it's really up to the discretion of the mayor, how he wants to get that vote. I can do it either by all in favor or resolution.
Being an ordinance.
Doesn't really matter, I think. It's just, it's really up to the mayor's discretion how he wants that vote tabulated.
Just wanna make sure we get it done.
Normally, when you want a more accurate tabulation, you ask for a resolution vote. But in that particular case, I didn't think it was necessary, but that's.
Not a problem. I just, normally in ordinance, we do require a voice vote.
Okay, we shall move on to the resolution requesting judicial declaration of vacancies of the City of Morris Charter Commission and appointing commissioners. Becca had sent us some communication, I think, or we talked about it at the last meeting. We had five members. I have two additional members and one alternate that I'd like the council to consider. That would get us up to that seven mark that we were kind of shooting for. The first person, first brave soul that said they would be a part of this process was Diane Baum. Most of you know Diane. She is a business owner on Main Street, owns Upecha. And the second person is Greg Prest. Greg is, if you don't know Greg, he is the CFO for Joe Riley Construction. He actually has some background in city government, he, in his prior experience down in Nokah. So I approached him, and he was glad to serve, so we can add those two, and if for some reason, somebody decides not to go forward of those seven, Jeff Richardson, I think Zach, you know Jeff, he just recently got appointed to the Planning Commission. He also said that he would be willing to serve if we needed another person, but and, you know, he is on another board, so we, we've talked about that, and we're trying to limit it, you know, limit to one board. All that good stuff, but, you know, I guess I don't foresee that being really an issue if it would come to, you know, having to select Jeff or something like that. Because the time commitment on the Charter Commission is gonna be pretty minimal, I think we all know, so.
Right.
But I have those two names, and I don't know if any of the other council has anybody else they would like to consider. Otherwise, we have a resolution before us.
Well, I will move on that resolution requesting judicial declaration of vacancies of the City of Morris Charter Commission and appointing new commissioners.
I'll second, and I'll voice a thank you to those that have volunteered.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, we're making progress, so, good deal. Any more discussion on that resolution? All right, we have a first and a second. We will have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
All right, council member Salvi.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Gullikson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes.
And I have the contact information for the other two. Becca, I can give that to you after the meeting. All right, now we have, next up is item C, first reading of ordinance number 120. This is an ordinance adding section 5.84 Brewers licensing to Chapter 5 of the Morris City Code. And I don't, Becca, you wanna speak to that one?
Yes, this is one of the few that we needed in order to have a brew pub or a brew pub or a tap room. So this, this adds in there how we, we can set it up, and as we move forward with it, we'll have to put in some fees in our, but that, that'll be a resolution that comes later on, but it talks about how it's set up, and then the off-sale packaging for them to be able to sell their brewed beer off-sale also. So, any questions on that?
I think we've been working on this for some time. I guess I really don't have anything. Does the council have any?
A hearing last night, anything major?
So that was the zoning. So that's the, the next one.
The next one, yeah.
So there was, there was nothing on the zoning part of it.
So this first one is regulations, and you did a good job looking at comparable cities, how they've got them set up, right? So this is very similar to other surrounding areas as well.
I think it's a good deal. I think we should be moving forward with stuff like this and people that wanna, you know, further their business in town, so I'll move on, make a motion to accept the first reading of the ordinance 120.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading, and of course, we know the second readings are gonna be on that April 9th, so. All right, I think on that, we'll just have all in favor, so we'll just say, because we're just approving the first reading, so we don't need a roll call. Pardon?
And setting that public hearing.
And setting the public hearing for that April 9th, yeah.
April 9th.
So that's all inclusive in that, in that motion, okay. Well, let's just have roll call vote on that. We'll keep it clean that way.
Council member Miller.
Yes.
Gullikson.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes.
Okay, so now we have the land use. We have to approve that one.
Yep, so the next two are both part of, part of the Chapter 5, well, this one's Chapter 11, but all about the alcohol type of stuff. So this is, this is the one that went to the Planning and Zoning Commission yesterday, so it just changes and designates that brew pubs and tap rooms can be used in, are permitted uses in almost all of them, except the neighborhood commercial is a conditional use, and it is also a conditional use in the heavy industrial, otherwise it'll be a permitted use in all the other locations. The Highway Business District, the Central Business District, and the Light Industrial.
Good.
And the Planning Commission recommended moving forward with that.
Okay, we'll deal with them individually, then D and E, okay? Can do that, or?
Yep, yep.
We can, we'll take some action on that first reading, then on the first one, let our item D then. Any other discussion in the council? Motion and a second on that.
I'll make a motion for the first reading of ordinance number 121, ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 1 Land Use Regulation zoning regarding brew pubs and brewer tap rooms with the second reading set for April 9th.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve that first reading, amending the Morris City Code, Chapter 1 Land Use Regulation regarding brew pubs and brewer tap rooms, and we shall have roll call vote on that first reading.
Council member Gullikson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes.
And then, of course, the follow-up to that is first reading of ordinance number 122, which is an ordinance amending Morris City Code, Chapter 5 Alcoholic Beverages Licensing and Regulation Regarding Hours.
Yeah, so we talked a few months back on as we look at our Chapter 5 and adding the brew pubs, just kind of trying to update what we needed to with this chapter, so we amended, we're looking at amending our hours to fall in line with state statute, so the hours of beer sales, no beer shall be made between 2:00 a.m. the hours of beer sales, no beer shall be made between two o'clock AM and eight o'clock AM Monday through Sunday. Our Sunday sales would change, um, same thing that they um and then, so they can sell from eight o'clock in the morning until two o'clock in the morning. And then, um, same with liquor and wine license, or wine sales also, so and consumption display. So they all changed in accordance with state statute. Um, some of the the things that had been in there, I think it was until one o'clock in the morning and couldn't start until ten was our, what our old ordinance stated, and then um it also said that you couldn't sell past four o'clock Christmas Eve or on Christmas Day. So that changes all of that.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, I I should be a little more clear, some of um, some of this, some of the things in state statute are still a little stricter than what we have in this and obviously businesses will have to follow the state law, uh, no matter what we put in our ordinance, but there's a some hours that'll still be stricter under state law on Sundays, I think.
Is that defined?
Yeah, that's...
Like what with the hours?
Well, for example, uh, three point two beer, which is just called beer under our city code because of the way everything's been written for so long. I think they can't sell until t- uh, ten AM on Sundays. Um, and then uh off sale, uh, liquor is still, for Sundays is still eleven AM to six PM. So, uh, so that's a little stricter still, I mean, we can go back to the drawing board and tighten up the language if you want, but it wouldn't have any practical effect other than if the state decided they wanted to loosen things up and just treat Sunday like any other day.
We're ready for it.
Then that would be, yeah, we'd be ready for that.
We'd be ready for it.
I know, I've been, some people have asked me, you know, what our position is on Sunday liquor sales and off sale side of things and you know, my answer to that was, we've kinda left it up to the discretion of our city man, or the the manager, the liquor store manager for the most part. Isn't that kinda what we've?
And I think they're closed on Sunday.
They're closed generally, but if they wanted to be open, they, we could, but we just choose not to, so, okay. Alright, it's fine.
The only other person that might have some input on this would be our local law enforcement, checking with them if they think the extended hours would be any issue where I don't see where it is in our community of extending from one o'clock to two o'clock in the morning to have that additional hour on a creating any major change in our habits of our establishments being open that extra hour, but that may be worth just to, just to throw it by Sheriff Dingman and to see his feelings on it if it would be anything that he could think of that would create a, a problem for us.
Alright, any other discussion on that ordinance, uh, the first reading? Alright, if not, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion uh for the first reading of ordinance one twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number one twenty-two, an ordinance amending Morris City Code chapter five alcoholic beverages licensing and regulation regarding hours. And we'll have roll call vote on that, please, Patty.
Councilmember Crails?
Yes.
Solvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gullickson?
Yes.
Mayor Wallers?
Yes. Okay, we are, I guess, uh, to the city manager's newsletter.
Alright, so like I said earlier, Patty and I went to the Explore Minnesota Tourism Conference. Uh, we met a lot of different contacts, hoping to keep in touch as we um move through this journey with uh the lodging tax and and keeping them um in our back pocket for some advice. So, uh, just some things to note, uh, the state legislatures last year gave eleven million dollars to do a nationwide campaign um kinda like what's being done in Michigan and in the Dakotas, so um they shared a lot of different information there on kinda what they're planning on doing. Um, interesting kinda information that we got along the way, um, in twenty twenty-two Stevens County took in um sixteen million five hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight oh seven in gross sales in the leisure and hospitality industry um, which resulted in one million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven seventy-six in state sales tax. So, and in Stevens County, um, the leisure and hospitality industry employs three hundred and eighty-one people. Um, so yeah, so right now, we are looking at kinda how other um entities, other tourism boards, other um visitors centers are kind of put together and organized, so we can see um kinda different ways they've utilized funds and if they're structured different and if we wanna look at structuring our tourism board um differently in order to utilize some of these funds and kinda how how we can use use them. So, we'll probably be seeing some more information on that um as we, as we find some more information. Uh, talk about the legislative session, so the legislative session is underway. Uh, we sent a letter of support for the emergency ambulance service aid, um, so they're still working on that. Um, a big bill that they're discussing that we should be watching is um one about zoning, so the bill um is looking at um kind of preempt, being preempt uh of local authority for zoning and land use, so they had some hearings on the fifth and the seventh. Um, some of the things that seem a little concerning are they want to prohibit um on imposing material design, aesthetic requirements, um, perm re provisions relating to permitting and inspection processes. Um, I don't know if it'll affect us a lot, but required density regardless of if there's infrastructure in place. So just different things I think that that we may just wanna keep an eye on as, as they may try and come and take some of our local authority. So there is, uh, there's been a lot of questions um on THC dispensaries in the city, so I know this starts next, next year, so um, next week, I'll be going up to the legi- legislative day for the coalition, so I'll be meeting with some um, different administrators, managers and kinda maybe having some discussion on kinda where they're at and where we need to be with trying to figure out how we move forward with this THC dispensary um items that are coming down the pipe next year. Um, then yeah, so next, next week, the nineteenth through the twenty-first, we'll be up at the Capitol, um, meeting with our legislatures, so if there's anything that you want me to bring forward to them, I'll be meeting with them. Then talking about housing, so Cheryl Kuhn, Becky Young and Jessica Kerwin, and I have been having a lot of discussions on housing. Um, what we can do for housing, different grant opportunities for housing. Um, as we move forward with seeing if there's any grant opportunities that um we find would be helpful for us, um then we may, as a city, once we get all that information, we might be looking at being the, the fiscal host for those. Just cause it would make the most sense for us, so as we, as we learn more and if there's different opportunities, you may be seeing some of that come down. Um, my uh role and task in this is, is working with Russ to, to look at those dilapidated structures. Um, the guys just got back from a water conference, so hopefully the end of this week or next week, we'll be working on our list for that. Um, Joe is, is looking into what we can do if we have to take some legal um recourse after the building inspector um does his portion, so as we move on with that, um, you may be hearing more. When we talked, at the budget time, we talked about the backups for the sirens and I know there were some questions. Um, so we would, but we did put in the Capitol LA budget for the backup for the system for the sirens. Um, it would allow if the power goes out, which it did um the last few storms, that if the sirens needed to be um, needed to be set off, that they would be able to. So, um, we budgeted forty thousand dollars in the Capitol LA, um, it came in at thirty-four thousand one eighty-five, so I would like to move forward with purchasing those. Um, those would be coming out of that safety aid dollars, that one-time money. So I'd like to, to move forward with that. And then, um, we looked at, I told you at the, at one of the previous meetings, that looking at the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant, looking at submitting two of them, one for the trail and one for the Wells Park Bathroom and Concession Stand. I haven't not done the one for the trails yet, um. Russ and I just went and looked at them uh yesterday, um, so there's, is some areas, but we're not quite certain if we'd be able to get funding. Um, is there, there is some places that we need to fix, but not any place that um that they may deem um needing to be done, so um we'll still probably try and put some in for some of those really needed areas, but we're um, the one that I think we, we would more qualify for is the Bathroom and Concession Stand, so they're all due April first, the first one, though I did send in for the bathrooms and concession by the deadline of February twenty-ninth. Um, that way, we are able to get some feedback on where they think we could make our application stronger. So that one went in. We have our pre-con meeting for the Transit Bus Garage tomorrow, they are hoping to start in April. So that'll be nice to move on that. And then, um, March twenty-sixth, in a couple weeks, uh, there's, Michelle Fishbach will be here, um, from two thirty to three thirty, so she'd like um, two councilmembers um to be at this meeting, um, they'd like to keep it at two, so it's not an open meeting law violation. We'd meet at City Hall, so if I could have two people that um would be available at that time, and then if anyone has any comments, issues, concerns to bring up with her in her office, um, just let me know by the twenty-sixth. Did you wanna know tonight about the twenty-sixth? About once to, to be there, um... Or you're just putting that out there so we know? I, yeah, I, if you just wanna kinda let me know if you're available and then we can, can go over there.
That's the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Two weeks from today before our next meeting?
Yeah, that's our meeting day, yeah.
And then April twenty-third, um, I talked to Jim Greenwald, um, today. So, our meeting on April twenty-third will be at the school at ten thirty. So.
That'll be good?
Yeah.
Always like that, it's always fun to get in front of the kids.
The backup siren spending, are we gonna have that as a request at our next meeting, or did we need to put that into a motion to make that spending to move forward with that?
If you'd like to, if, if you'd like to put it in a motion tonight, I'd, I'd like to get...
I don't know if there's any more information we need out of that, or if it's something that was a budgeted item. I think to, to get it done with and to move forward with, it would be my rec- recommendation. And I would make it a motion for us to, to go ahead and uh proceed with the backup siren plan for the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars, since it's under budget on what we had budgeted for.
I was thinking the same thing, and with that, I would second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the backup siren system there. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those who pull the same sign. Motion carried. Anything else on your newsletter or any questions for Becca?
I just was, you brought up about the THC dispensaries and um, is it not our intent to do it uh limited to only the city doing it?
So I believe, and I'd have to look at state statute, I believe the county can deter, can they determine how, I think we have to have for sure one in the county for so many, I don't...
But we, we can, can we limit it in our city limits to just, just like our liquor store?
I believe so.
We control the, the, the sale?
I believe so.
Okay.
I will need to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of gray area on it yet, we still need a lot more information. Zach had been to some meetings and saying that most of the employees in there seem to have some big bloodshot eyes and just the the process while you're working around, you know, I just making sure it's something we wanna get involved with, with the city, I mean, yeah, but it's, it's a lot of gray area yet, and I think we're quite a ways off on doing anything there, but just, we need to gather more information on that.
And as of now, the bank's, or it has to not taking any money, that is what I have.
They're saying as of now, they're not gonna do the marijuana sales, so we'd have to, there's a lot to be worked out, like you said.
How many days did it take you to come back out of it after you were in there?
What are you talking about?
Don't remember nothing, geez.
You never know.
You never know.
I mean, things could change a lot, we have an election between now and then and...
I know, they're studying now.
Who knows?
I guess I was just, I was making that in reference to you had, had been taking some calls about
I had, yeah, I had had.
And so, is it, is it something that, uh, if, if it does come down, are we going to want to control it by having it like we do with the liquor store, making the proceeds, coming back in and helping to reduce taxes or, or, or pay for, you know, the parks and, and the things that we use the liquor store money for now? Or is it something that we're not going to get with and so that it, we could make that choice where, you know, people then would wanna do it themselves, I don't know how we'd regulate that, but I didn't sh- I wasn't sure what everybody here was thinking on that situation.
Do we wanna be in the THC business or not, that's kind of a question before us.
I think it's a little too early to make that decision and be discussing it, to be honest, and I think to say that anyway, there's a few things that when we talk about reducing taxes is probably not accurate, cause they really don't, doesn't reduce our taxes, it may not increase taxes, but it doesn't reduce them. So I think we just need to be very cautious and think through this and get all the, what, what the state is going to do before we kinda commit one way or the other or say much about it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's, that's, that's true, I just didn't know, you know, we're gonna field a lot of calls, but everybody's kinda thinking or, or not, so.
Yeah, I agree with you, Cam, I think there's just too many unknowns at this point. Alright, any other questions for off the city manager's newsletter, otherwise we'll move on to the board updates. Uh, any of the members of the council would like to share, now would be a good time for that. I really don't have anything on any of my respective boards. Hearing none, we can move on to other business, just a question for Becca. Uh, I see our city guys are out there scratching out a Ponte Terre Park, uh, are they working on, is that like a?
Putting in a road.
Oh, they're at a backhoe out there and they're, okay, I was wondering what they were doing.
Yep.
A road going where?
In the campground.
Oh, okay, just so extending in it?
Yep.
Okay.
I think they were planning on extending back into that corner, that's back in with that wooded area that belongs to the Bollness family, that just expanding back in for more of a tenting area, like back in where that horseshoe pit was to the south of there.
Alright. Did we talk about putting a pickleball court out there, or did I dream that?
I, that has been brought up at the last parkour meeting.
It'd be a nice idea if we could make that happen out there, but that takes, I suppose, a doory me too.
And Dorgi had mentioned that it didn't need to be nothing elaborate, just putting down some concrete or cement and putting down a pad and keeping it relatively simple, but just the potential of doing that moving forward with the, the use of our current two facilities that we have.
And I just had one last thing, what is the next step for our seven brave souls on the Charter Commission? Are we gonna reach out to them, send them letters of communication, or how are we gonna?
Okay, and they're, and they're all Morris residents, City Morris, okay. Uh, so, I think we... Uh, so, I think we reach out to them, let them know this uh, this resolution has passed, or do we need a second reading on that?
No.
No, okay, so this resolution has passed, uh, we will be essentially uh, sending this to the uh, chief judge for approval and uh, then we should be looking at a uh, first meeting for the new commission.
Okay. So do we contact them in the interim to let them know that they've been selected?
I, I would.
Okay.
Yes, and I, I assume we, we'll need some sort of swearing in for them, probably, or at least, or we can just have them sign a declaration. But uh, yeah, we can work that out.
And that would be after the judge appoints them.
Right.
Okay.
Were they gonna be involved in that meeting that we postponed?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be probably.
Whenever that happens, but I could probably get that back on the schedule, I suppose now anytime after we've got the seven people scheduled.
After they get appointed.
After they get appointed, so, yep. Okay, alright, and you'll take care of that, Becca?
Yep.
Alright. Okay, any other, anything else to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting.